It's about a client. Forums, so I'll be needing order and first order business is approval of the agenda. I would like to propose a finer revision, which is for a regularly scheduled agenda item. I think committee to highlight my director says board action required to act. That just makes the appointment, seems there's our voting. With that amendment, we can adopt. I did it all again, please say aye. I will say nay. You, Dan, in a public discussion, you know, the public, progress the board. So we'll move to item four. By the way, of course, people, builders are doing a business. The kickoff is at 7:30. It is a sellout. It will be terrible party. So we will do a bill of due diligence expeditiously. I have season tickets. I've had season tickets from back when over three or four thousand us there. And this is topic here. But I don't know who it is, but it's somebody who developed this for some reason. I got tickets. Okay, so the first item of business is to appoint a committee to evaluate the library director. We took, we started this in November. So we sort of aspire to have a report in January. It's frequently in February. In fact, no published rule, it says when it has to happen. So I did ask Dan, who served with last year, if he'd mind sharing this year. He's agreed with that. He said, I'm looking to volunteers to join. So you can organize the committee. Actually, again, there are rules about how this is done. We've sort of settled in the last few years into a way of building it. But if the committee chooses to be a different way, it's a rule. Okay, with that, we can move on to policy review. The basic alteration policy. Redline.
But with the update, there are some style. I thought things that it's mostly in this D alter section. The meeting room is not used. And not a reference to that. What that symbol is called. And then in the right next to it, library, if all of the everything else is capitalized, the library should be also. I'm just missed. And then at the very bottom, one last, the very last. One more library should be capitalized. We now have an eleven thought. Yeah, everything else capitalized. And there's one library and they're like, library is your, yeah, library me too. Yeah, I knew the first line too. So there's just a couple. Yes, John's not here.
Remember I always call out that these.
See.
Project, yeah. Knows adjusted as a weather and some committee takes action. That is a pleasure of the court president. So that's what I wanted to make clear that we had a little discussion on that. But I want to make sure that that's something that needs discretion. For the bylaws, state of the point, solid views. With these seven research data, it has to be approved. But are there comments on the card? I think what I'll do then is ask any who are interested in serving on that. Meeting to email the minutes, let's say, before Thanksgiving. If I don't hear from three people, then I'll start again. My. Right, I think that's something that maybe it'd be side. I.
I have to leave them sometimes.
Absolutely. I think that it would be worthwhile for the committee to briefly touch base on some reasonable. Some reasonable frequency. They say parannaeal, probably part of the library director. Anything going on, we should be thinking about.
I thought, I know that date.
Yeah.
Thank you for preparing the draft statement.
Would be rare.
Very timely and also.
Right, but I, yeah, I would see preparing something would happen once a year or twice a year or something. Just thinking about how many statements we've made in the last few years like that. And the more simple.
Like another Netflix.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we also want to go actively. How often you want to do something.
Could I make that a revision? So perhaps. I think perhaps instead of simply stating only prepare relevant draft public statements, it might also be. I'm not going to wordsmith, but I think another action would be identifying public statements that the board wants to sign on to, like we did with the City of Literature. So not simply preparing your own, but there might be a statement that you are supporting. So then that. Right, so I'm curious to how people consider a board bullet point. Or if it could simply be preparing relevant draft public statements or identifying existing public statements.
We could certainly. I think it might also be an expression of that. So you have to, you know, hard to call it out. Do you need accuracy as you have?
I didn't even go back. On the third board, we changed from all the.
So are the, is the word.
Preparing draft or identifying existing.
So after draft.
Right, or identifying preexisting statements or, yeah. Because I do think that that is a separate. I feel like that's one category of advocacy.
So let me know if you would like to serve. Right, so staff reports. But, all right. But again, I think it'll depend on how. Whether you do it for. I'm correct. Some would do that before, but a few before the time committed. There are a lot of politics about the request. So forty percent of. But it's not a meeting that you get a lot of great history to that. But I felt listening to you, I thought it was a good conversation that has more kind of ceiling. Definitely. Both of us agree that. So if you want. That actually, that's helpful. Might be, I don't know. It's, it's the, this is the board of trustees meeting. Oh, no, that's why did I? Well, Tom, I'm Trinity. Yeah, I thought you were. You just want to take over some things. Is there a cool? And sorry for. So, so we're trying to use.
Oh, okay. John, oh, he's in the. He was in the.
Maybe also send it out. No, and the only thing I didn't shoot for important. Also, I think, yeah, that, that. So. The lobby could have been a part of the board, or the two. All of that. Let's talk. Any question?
You have a sense of why perhaps they're not? Okay. Oh. I'm sorry.
Of the last thirty questions.
A strongly disagreeing. Yeah, no, this is not.
And I think that because. And I understand that. And especially because we have full support. We have to be confused from all of our. So I, I understand.
Okay, can I encourage a consideration for next time? That when this particular is submitted in chapter, there is that. And I'm happy to help. What we prioritize the impact that this has in a community. Because it lowers ratings of school systems. It impacts real estate changes. It also impacts dollars that remain in the community, services, and other areas. And so what encourages to make a closer connection between each other's access and freedom for whether it's policies that affect the population in Calgary, in that city engagement funding, and then consequently, increasing.
Yeah, I could, I can share that. First year, that because of public thought, I did what we would send that. Can also.
You wouldn't do it in my ways to do.
That's my.
Sure.
We totally simplify the things. But I think we can always say more and then compare.
Paul, thank you for considering.
I'm just curious, sort of all the current events that have been the. Outcoming thing from that process as a first. I don't know. It isn't the first day. I'll go with. Just going. Also. My impressions are that once a thing, that the city of Dallas are pretty global. So that's, that's what I think. You know.
I think that that might be soon, but the literature position statement on that. It's okay, that they need to go, like you say, this reception.
I think it's worth looking into at some point, checking in. But we do have faculty at the university. I'd be happy to reach out to ask what their, and their experts.
I think.
This is talking.
But I think we want to take the reception. We have the city there. And it's unlimited audience. It's supposed to be only one or two people that show, but still it may.
Yeah, I don't think people sometimes consider that there are. It's not any.
Right, and I think you're framing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be happy to share that information if you'd mind. So when is the best way for us to receive that? Because if we need to do a phone meeting, because otherwise it would be a communication. Well, this isn't a different meeting slot. Can you think that? Be just caring for something.
We're not.
But I think, you know, we have enough to say. It's a nice, this would have been a perfect place to do that.
Yeah, some say that.
Why don't you?
I think that's why.
Well, we do. Normally, that much. I don't think it's more specific than that. I don't know, but I don't.
It would also be helpful, this, this, that we have a strategic plan, mission, statements. Say, we have those, we could crosswalk and make sure that we, you know, explain how the policies of library supports the strategic plan.
I'm someone I'd like to do. Two, yeah, I had your band off your. And I really felt like, let's try now. Sitting here, I was like. I'm very brave. I'm going to do. Actually, to watch the last thing. I don't think I've heard anything about either. You say, after, because people that are interested in book fans and then for referencing crowd events.
I just think of. Words will be out probably internationally. You just think it's kind of good as.
Yes.
Whatever. Thank you. You do have to be a member of them.
Yeah.
It opened February, March 3rd. It's.
Yeah, we celebrate.
So we might need to. Yeah. Yeah. Had a Tuesday and. One library. Yeah, Sam's worth it.
Board members coming.
Impressed.
We all remember. Okay.
Oh, I think that's the. Very late.
Very late. I realize as they're walking out. I'd rather suspend a bunch of.
You can still, you can still check out.
But I won't be able to. And I'd like to. Find us. I had a finance committee at last. I checked the minutes, I couldn't find any charge for the finance. And so I guess what I would like to do is show some of a few people who volunteered to fight such a charge. Not a big guy, just was finance. Nervous about. So volunteers. Three people, Robert, thank you.
I'm. Do that one.
And then you can say someone else.
Originally, it was. Idea was. Oh, no, well, I almost get away with the purpose of that. Actually, I was on the point, he knows his kind of comment over the financial. Like he kind of comes through and finds things that are alibers. Put them to us. The finance committee at that point would kind of put things in anything that we didn't understand or that we wanted clarification on so that we could crack over a couple of times. Like he struggled with some kind of explanation or not. Or look into it as needed or that kind of thing. So I think in our meeting, maybe one and a half days, we kind of realized, oh, we already do need it. That we're just, as a finance committee, we're just a little more closely, so that we're. There were outliers or. I don't understand. And the one thing that has to do with line item being able to forget our line item. I live in Carolina, all of this, and that we didn't understand. Here it was. City freezing. That was more poor, that just didn't make sense, library, but you guys are using it appropriately or to. This, um, we, we go on to another, or. Here, report, I have a budget, seem to cover most of what our finance, what we're talking about, or I think. How far we are within and under fifty inches. So, that was where it started. I don't know if there's a different idea of where it should go or what. Or, and there is also a bit like shit in what this has, you see that. Uh, or lack.
So I think I'm going to do this, pushing this. I think it's an issue of order, sensibility, really, you can know you're, it's a committee that knows the operations because you won't. Give you your responsibility. And the second is, I think they're going to be very significant stresses. Where that budget, maybe a community that should consider, um, working with the draft draft strategies or alternatives that could be implemented publicly. And it's just to give an idea of what issues. Right, right.
We wanted to make. When Carol and I were.
They can underwrite to me, need something.
So please consider working on.
Yeah, right.
On one day here.
Very.
Going back to it. So it's just couple of drafts and then. We didn't put a few staff, it wasn't a huge task to take that.
It should be.
EJ Sugarfield.
So TJ said yes, okay, great, thank, thank you all. Uh, and then I'll finish my present report here. Well, that's finance, I think, as, um, I was waiting to invite somebody to manager's office to brief us. About what they see going forward as financial climate. We have a big. So Jeff, will you guys go over it right now? Tell us what things look like. Something about that. Questions to ask. The future of the city budget.
Okay, like in library books sale. To come to state only night on Thursday, the 30th, at the exact same time as the legislation. So I can't go to the legislation. But it's the last thing on sale time, and I'd be happy to ask. About diversity, because that was a tough question I had with our, my sales rep. She asked me, there's books that you have. No, it was a tricky question to feel and send. Walk me back those to the point I think. Or I hope that. Were they, realize what backlash is coming from that. Was, um. One of the first book sales for a bunch of pieces, one of the chunk of books from my library, and I'm sure. Even in mine, it's fairly well funded, so I'm sure it's due for other ones, but if you don't make a certain dollar amount, vendors won't come to you. So Scholastic is the only book sale vendor that will sell its annual book sale. They can make less than five thousand dollars amount of books, which to me makes me furious because it's cutting out. You know, like the ones you pick up. But anyway, there's my other stuff, some thoughts to come on, but. Maybe it's funny.
I have a question, but. In the announcement of the plan for sale, returning the article. On libraries, how much would it be? That being canceled last year, that was a huge hit for libraries, but now that it's ready to be restored. I'm just wondering if you have anything about management. And if some of the press just hit right. Sales back in the.
Want to put out a little incentive there. So the conversation is a well-known. This is like if you've got an academic journal in the newspaper and you went on a hot day, that's what you would get, the conversation. And it's really, it's written in an accessible way, and it's a way to translate again, research and scholarly work into, you know, just. Acceptable language. And so, um, there is a really wonderful collection of articles that have been written by. Um, researchers all over the country on good leading with challenges, cultural freedom, and some of these issues. Again, from just an informative perspective. And, um, it's freely available, it's open source, and it's a wonderful way for you to share with people and just. Have informed conversations across the lens. So if someone asks you about your role as a trustee of the public library, or someone asks you why they should do, you know. A thing about this at all, um, it just gives you a lot of those interesting perspectives you're having this conversation. And the LIS faculty at Lila, we were hosted, um, and we were the producers of Simnet once, so we're hoping that also come out around Christmas time. Um, again, because we want to, um, just have, invite people to discuss these issues in, in. Different ways. So, I'll happily send the link out to everyone, and there is a very cool collection of, for brief. Easily accessible on Polisec and just. Make the conversation a little bit more. Something awesome to do that I'm staying. I think it would. So I'll.
Has the library's heartburn replaced? Also, board, anybody. Page your calendar, put it on the same. Yeah, um, you can set, so this day, you find a test Tuesday, proportion of the day. Yeah, you should be giving that. Yes, Jeff is. Something she not asked me. I love. Really many languages. It really is. Yeah, it's, it's really quite. All right, Charlie, we did our business. I think that is.
So we're well.